So, does the public have the opportunity to speak tonight?
It's not really a meeting, so everything's informal. You know what I mean?
Trying to figure out a way of, well, that's what I'm saying, I I know you had something that you wanted to say, so I didn't know if there's a way to put it on, I mean, I mean, it can't technically be on record, but it could be.
I think. You're gonna allow people to ask you questions?
I mean, sure.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's uh, this is very cool and everything.
Yeah.
But uh, what did you say?
I don't really have any questions.
Yeah, so, so why don't we do this? Why don't, just so that we all know what we're getting into here, right?
Sure.
Um, we'll have you give your presentation, open it up for questions, then we'll close questions, and then open it up for any public comment. And then we'll log on. Cool?
Yep.
Excellent. For your work, sir.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays, whichever politically correct I'm not having himself, everyone, um, and thank you guys.
Yeah.
Right, good enough, I have a rest of my time.
Oh. Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
You bet.
I'll talk to you next.
Happy holidays.
Yes, in a much better new hand.
Yes. Okay.
All right, uh, good evening, uh, my name is David Eastridge, I'm with Thorndike Development, I'm a partner there. Um, Thorndike has been building homes on the south shore, um, southeast Massachusetts for about forty years now. Um, we exclusively do residential construction. I've been with the company for about twenty years, and I get involved in permitting, site design, um, liaison with the town, liaison with the neighbors, um, all that sort of thing. So, tonight, um, we were asked by the board to come and just give a introductory presentation to our proposal. Um, the process that we're currently in, we've submitted what's called a project eligibility application to MHP. And that, they are a, um, organization that helps fund affordable housing within Massachusetts. And so, we're in a process where they evaluate our application and, um, determine whether, uh, the project should go forward from a funding of affordable housing standpoint. And so, as part of that process, um, we deliver a copy of the application, uh, to the town in which, you know, we're proposing the, the new community, and they have an opportunity to make comments and review, and send those comments to, back to MHP, so they can include those in their, uh, evaluation of the project. So, uh, the planning board has asked me here tonight so they could get a little bit more information, because they are one of the entities within the town that will make comments to mass housing, uh, on this community. Um, so we're at a very introductory stage. Uh, we anticipate, um, uh, coming back to the town with our, let's say, full submittal towards the end of January. Uh, the zoning board of appeals will actually be the, uh, the board that is the, uh, permit granting authority in this case for a comprehensive permit. So, um, uh, the planning board will probably play more of an advisory role, uh, to the zoning board of appeals, but it will be up to the zoning board of appeals to hear the, hear the proposal, you know, facilitate questions, public hearings and the like, and, uh, ultimately, you know, hopefully issue a permit at the end of the process. So, um, uh, so that's a little bit of, kind of, setting the stage, background introduction. So, as I mentioned, we've been, uh, in business for a while. Um, and we've done probably five communities that are, um, similar in nature to what we're proposing here today. Um, we've done them in, currently working in Canton and Plymouth, uh, we've done communities in Ashland and Norwood, and probably the community that most closely represents what we're proposing here today is in, um, is in Norton. It's called, uh, East Main, it's right off of Route one twenty-three, just north of, uh, the intersection of one twenty-three and four ninety-five. So, if you'd like to check us out, you know, that, that is a community that we built, oh, I don't know, maybe seven, seven years ago or so? Um, take a look at the larger of the two building styles that are there, and that's similar to what we're gonna be, uh, proposing at two sixty-five, uh, Mont Ponce. Um, so this is the site, I think probably everybody knows where it is, but, um, north is up on us, so this is the main intersection. The Walmart supermarket and everything, this is the, uh, I guess the company is right here. Um, this is, um, yeah, this is the, the Meadows over here, so Halifax Meadows, the, uh, the company over here.
Midamun.
So, just for orientation, golf course will be right over here. So, this is, uh, two sixty-five, Mont Ponce, and I'm gonna talk about this exclusively, and then I'll touch on this other property towards, towards the end. Um, so this whole site is twenty-six acres, and it kind of extends, uh, down into here, and it's hummocky and has some wetlands and, and that sort of thing. This, this site, two sixty-five Mont Ponce, it was, uh, previously permitted and developed back in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen for a series of townhomes. Um, that, you guys may know more about the, the story than I do with that, but essentially, uh, um, the way we've been told is that partners did not get along, and, uh, the project kind of ground to a halt after some infrastructure, some roads, and basically one, one foundation for six units was, was in place. So, um, we have, uh, so we own this, this property outright, um, and this one as well across the street. And we have, uh, we are proposing, uh, this development, which has two hundred units in total. There are five buildings that are three stories tall. They have thirty-six units, uh, each in them, so basically twelve per floor, uh, they're elevated. We also have, um, these five other buildings here, which are, uh, carriage houses. So, there'll be four units in each one of these five buildings, it's kind of completing the, another twenty units to get to the two hundred. So, these are, uh, flats above, uh, above garages, if you will. Then there's also these four freestanding garages, so these are just kind of individual, kind of nine bay, uh, uh, nine bay garages. And lastly, there's a, um, leasing center, um, a little bit of a community center, but more of a, an office for, um, a rental office, uh, located here. Uh, this, uh, if you've been by the site or have walked on the site, as many have. Oh.
No competition. Luckily we didn't get.
That was a good interruption, thank you.
No sound, no sound, just. I love to, um, unmute her.
unmute.
My new dad, whoa. Oh, I thought you were gonna die, uh.
Maybe check one of the other mics.
Hi. Did you uh, uh, yes, okay. Uh. Did you set something? There is sound stream, which is very lovely, is it louder now?
Testing one, two, three.
Does it help to move a couple of these microphones over? No, that microphone should be.
Should be good. So, we are testing to see if the volume on the stream is any louder now. Testing, testing, testing. Testing, testing, testing.
Now, because area fifty-eight. What? So, we're testing to see if the volume stream is any louder now. Okay.
Thank you, David.
It's a little scary to see yourself.
Okay.
Okay, so, should I, uh, back up, continue?
Continue.
Okay, so, um, so I was saying, if you've been by the site, uh, if you've been, actually been on the site, it's kind of, uh, ways back, it was a little bit of a dumping round, but I think there's a lot of folks who go over there and walk their dogs from adjacent communities. Um, but this central green is in a very similar location as the, uh, previous community. They were gonna have their, their leaching fields, um, for their septic system, were kind of partially built in here, and there's a loop road, kind of going around. Their entrance is right about the same location that we're, where we're proposing an entrance. The, uh, existing garage is, uh, located right over here. So, similar type of, uh, type of circulation. Um, we, due to the size of this community, it's gonna require a wastewater treatment plant, as opposed to just a traditional septic system. So, again, the leaching fields will still be, um, located under the central green. Um, most, if not all, will be there, we're also exploring some areas over here as potential locations. And then the detention basins will be located over on the perimeter of the site, similar to what was, uh, what was proposed before. Um, we're gonna have town water, as I said, we're building a treatment plant for sewer. We will probably not bring gas onto the site, um, because the way the Massachusetts energy code is going, it really, um, discourages, uh, new gas hookups, if you will. Um, and then, um, so that's how, uh, the property will be serviced. Um, let's see, what else?
Do we have questions now we say until we end?
Yeah, let me, let me go through one other section, and then, then, go ahead. Sure. Um, so in terms of the, um, kind of status schedule, I, I started with some of it, just to give you guys a framework as to where we are. Um, so we expect, we've reached out to some of the, um, uh, direct abutters, I had a meeting with the trustees of Halifax Meadows, uh, last week, had conversations with the owner of the commercial site, and this is actually, um, uh, part of the Halifax Housing Authority, um, that is affiliated with Pembroke. Um, so we've talked to them, um, still have more work to do there, but again, we're at the, at the preliminary stages. So, we will, as I said, expect to make a full submission to the ZBA towards the, um, towards the end of January. Now, this, this property here, so this is two sixty-six, um, Mont Ponce, it, um, commonly known as the Peach Farm. And, uh, so we, we've also purchased that and, um, own that outright. Uh, we are proposing a single, uh, thirty unit building, so ten units per floor on that location, and one freestanding garage there. Um, one of the first things that we're going to try to accomplish with the zoning board of appeals is determine whether it, it makes sense for the town and for us to kind of consider these two projects, um, in unison, um, as we go through. You know, obviously, there's efficiencies for everybody, 'cause it's the, all the same people involved, uh, to talk about it almost as, uh, as one project. There's some subtleties as to whether it's combined or split, given the number of, uh, units and how it relates to, you know, kind of, uh, affordable housing, uh, legislation. But, um, we're, we would like to kind of, uh, present, uh, two sixty-five and two sixty-six as essentially one project, uh, as we go through the various processes with the town. I think that was it. So, that's, um, that's essentially the, you know, kind of the, the brief overview, um, of the.
Have you done any studies on possibly how many children, um, would be going to schools out of the two hundred units?
So, um, it's, uh, yes, um, so we've got to ask this question, you know, many times, every time we put forth a proposal. Um, the number that, that we've seen, and we can provide information in the future to help back this up, is, uh, thirteen children per hundred units. So, this would be twenty-six children, um, within this community for the two hundred units here. Um, typically, they're on the younger side, um, so you can kind of do the math as to how many, you know, new kids per, per class, um, if you like.
And excuse me if you've said it, but a lot of information came out, how, how many bedrooms is each unit?
So, it's a mixture of ones, twos, and threes.
Okay.
Sixty percent of the units are two bedrooms, thirty percent are one bedrooms, and ten percent are three bedrooms. So, it's easy math with the two hundred units, so it's, it'll be twenty-three bedrooms, a hundred and twenty-two bedrooms, and sixty-one bedrooms.
Um, and you're leasing them all?
Yes, yes, these will all be rentals.
So, how, um, how would the affordable housing, um, be calculated?
Twenty-five, twenty-five percent of the homes will be, uh, affordable.
Right.
For eighty percent of the median income.
What would be an ideal affordable leasing?
So, the, the, the affordable units, I think they're gonna go for between fourteen hundred and eighteen hundred a month, in terms of the, the, that's what you're asking, the, the monthly fee.
Yeah. Yes.
Um, it's all a formula based on, uh, the current median income calculation that the state provides at that moment in time. Um, so it's really, what we charge has nothing to do with, it's not, it's not really a choice at all. Doesn't have to do with, anything to do with the size of the unit, the, you know, the finishes, uh, what town it's in, you know, anything. If it's in this region, it, it's a formula that says it's, you know, thirty percent of the eighty percent of median income, you know, minus other expenses, and that's how you derive, uh, the rents.
Median income for the town of Halifax?
No, there's regions within Massachusetts, so I'm not sure the.
The market value.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's rather extensive, though, there, it's not just kind of three towns, I think it extends, you know, all the way till it's.
It's areas.
Yeah, till it touches, you know, kind of Canton and up to one twenty.
So, it's outside Plymouth County then?
Some of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
That building down below, I know you said you wanna talk about it two separate, correct?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna talk about it, let's talk about it.
Sure.
Uh, thirty units there, so all in on the colorful section that you have, two hundred and thirty.
Sure. That's correct. Yep, so two hundred for two sixty-five Mont Ponce, and thirty for two sixty-six Mont Ponce.
So, you've done, as you were saying, you've done multiple, um, projects along these lines, right, which helps, this isn't, you're not cutting your teeth on our town.
Correct, yep.
Uh. What do you see being, some of the, the top three reasons the residents are not in favor of this? Like, what, what comes up?
Um, so, uh, the immediate thing is, uh, density. It's, it's a lot of units per acre, you know, on this parcel. So, that's a, that's a typical objection. Um, you, for better, for worse, the, the structure of, the structure within the state, this is kind of the way affordable housing gets built, um, with the, the forty B legislation. So, it's not, um, it's by no means a, a perfect tool, it can be a very, very blunt instrument. Um, from our background, if you ask around, we try to work as cooperatively as possible with the towns. So, we're not gonna, if, if it goes forward and people are like, you can do one building, you can't do five, then, then we're kind of, we're kind of done, and we're, you know, the conversation sort of ends, ends there. If it's, you know, could you add a sidewalk from here to go to, to the main intersection that will benefit, you know, the abutters? That's sort, absolutely on the table, you know? So, it's kind of those comments around the fringes that are most helpful to hear. So, back, back to your question, so density is the first one. School, uh, number of kids in the schools is the second one, so in, you know, impacts on the tax base. Um, and then there's the, uh, kind of, a little bit of, I would call it a little xenophobia, you know? Um, so you have affordable housing, who's gonna be moving to my town? You know, and, uh, a little bit of fear of the other. So, that is, those are kind of the three top things that, uh, that typically, you know, come up.
What kind of leases are you doing? Are you doing one year, are you doing six months, are you, like, what are you doing?
Uh, we're not quite there yet for the, for the structure of that. Um, we, we will likely hire, uh, Doblin, um, who has, uh, leased and managed a number of our communities in the past. They're the ones that are represented in the, uh, P E L packet, um, that, that you have. Um, so you can, you know, do some research, but they're very large, and they, they, they do manage all types of properties around. So, we kind of, once we get into the details of the, the marketing strategy, um, you know, it, it's, in general, in general, they're a year. But, uh, typically, but again, we're not, we're not at that point.
Okay. Um, for, I'm glad that you, you had mentioned the, the other ones that you've done, the other towns that you've worked in.
Mm-hmm.
And I would agree that Norton is similar to, you know, other than having a college in it, but other than that, as far as the, the population.
Yeah.
And the label.
Yeah, I was really speaking more from the building that we build.
Okay.
It's most similar in Norton, I wasn't trying to compare the towns.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand that, I just, when, when I think of, uh.
I was a little remiss, too, I should have, this, so this is a, um, this is a rendering of the, uh, of the building. So, this is a three D model of the actual architecture that we have. And so, and this is a little vignette, uh, looking at the central green, so I'll flip it back and forth. But if you take, kind of take a mental snapshot of that, um, that's kind of a bird's eye view looking this way.
Got it.
Onto that central green. So, so this is an actual kind of rendering of that, of that site plan, and this gives you a little glimpse as to what the carriage houses would look like.
So, the reason, the reason why I'm bringing that up is because, uh, being fairly familiar with the other parts of the state, right, it's pretty well, eastern part of the state. Um, you know, the Cantons and, and those types of towns are, are a little bigger in size, a little more city oriented, closer to the city.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Um, Norton obviously being much bigger than Halifax, but, uh, probably has a little bit more of a similar characteristics to the town to, to be, but. Have you proposed this in other neighboring towns or cities that, that are closer to us?
No, not this exact product, um, uh, you know, our history goes back a ways, and it, it started with really doing kind of, you know, uh, typical single family subdivisions, evolved into doing many, uh, over fifty-five townhouse communities. That's probably what we've built the most of, over, over the years. In the last, um, I'd say, eight years or so, we've gotten into this larger, uh, product type. Um, but those are the, those are the only towns where we've built something kind of of, of this scale, if you will. The, those, those, um, the size in terms of units, uh, ranged from a hundred and eighty-eight, that was in Norton, that was the smallest one, up to four hundred, and that was in Ashland, right at a, uh, right at their commuter rail stop.
Uh, yeah, I think I have two more questions.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Was the one in Ashland forty R?
Um, boy, I'm not. I think we ended up still doing twenty-five percent affordable there. Um, I'd have to look back, but, but it's a good, good question, 'cause obviously, uh, the transit stop, and there's an opportunity to do forty R. I'd have to, I'd definitely.
If the town subscribes.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, we're talking about through that Middleborough, down by the, uh, Overpass Corner, if I have any thought of this.
Mm-hmm.
Business district.
Yeah, everything else has been, uh, that one I'll have to look back on, but, um, everything else certainly has been forty B.
So, I guess my question, 'cause we're, we're obviously open to everything coming into town, to the benefit of the town, that's what we're here for, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
We're not here to shut people out, but accept new opportunities. I'm curious as to why a town, the reason for my first question would be more of, have you been in a situation where you've presented this type of project to a town that they didn't accept it, and I'd be just curious as to why, they, why a town wouldn't?
Um, no, we've never gotten to the point where, uh, we've, we've gotten a no. It's always been, um, accepted with conditions that have been negotiated.
Okay. And you accepted those conditions to perform the project?
So. Yeah.
So, you never needed to move away from a project, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've, yeah, completed the permitting and, and built and completed the projects of everything that we've tried so far, yeah.
Well, that's easy. Um, I think we're already getting called up here, and not that it matters, 'cause we're just making comments, right? Um, I find it hard to believe, or I, I guess I'd have to understand, I'm a statistics guy, right? So, I'd have to understand where two hundred and thirty units only spits out twenty-eight kids.
Yeah, we'll have to back it up, no one believes that.
Yeah.
And, and.
As you can imagine, I mean, he's got two, three bedroom apartments, he had two hundred and thirty of them, how many living space?
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
That's not just two hundred units, if you put sixty percent of them at, at, you know, you're, you're talking about four hundred to five hundred living spaces.
Yeah. Uh, you know, as.
Twelve kids, twenty-six kids.
As with, um, you know, the, as families go through life, right? You often will start out in an apartment such as this. And then you find, when you have your second child, you wanna find something with your own backyard. And, and then, so as the, as they have their second kid, you know, they start to look for something else and move out and make it available for someone else who doesn't have any kids or not yet.
Right.
So, we find that, once people start having kids, they, they tend to, they tend to move on. So, that's one factor that might help make that number make sense. But as I said, as we go through the process, we can provide, you know, kind of references for that, so, uh, some, some backup data.
Yeah, and I guess I feel as though, being a, of, a father of two young children, and understanding the economic impact of that, um, boy, with affordable housing, sure, ease the economic impact of that to some children. So, for every, every person that you're saying wants their own backyard, not everybody, not every person can afford it, which is why this is.
Right, yeah.
Um, my last question is, um, I guess it's, it's probably gonna be a harder question to answer, only because you haven't presented it to somebody that's, that's, you have a perfect track record as far as presentation and, and, um, coming to completion.
Yes, yes.
So, in order for this to continue to completion, it's zoning board of appeals, they stamp it, and then you're on your way?
Um, there are, uh, we also need some kind of state permits, so groundwater discharge permit for the, you know, so that, we need more technical permits, that's the only permit I would describe as somewhat political.
Okay.
Uh, the, um, uh, the other ones are, are more, kind of meet the standards.
Building permits.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and, and you move forward.
So, essentially, the only thing.
There really is that one, that's why the word comprehensive, right? It's, it's kind of an all-in-one permit.
I guess where my brain goes is.
Well, also, sorry, we'll also need, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, we'll also need a, um, uh, the comprehensive permit does not sup- supersede the, um, Conservation Commission, um, in their role of following kind of the state guidelines, right? So, uh, they have to execute kind of mass D E P guidelines, um, not necessarily the local bylaws. You know, the, the, the local bylaws are what kind of get trumped by this forty B, um, comprehensive permit process.
And I, I guess where I'm go, where I go with that is, is that a lot of times, in the planning board, if we don't feel as though something suits the character of our town, we have the ability to say, thanks anyways, thank you for your time. Obviously, we don't have that here, so my brain goes to, once you get through the zoning board, essentially, the zoning board is the only thing that keeps this from coming in or accepting this to come into town.
Correct, yeah, yeah, it's, that, that, that is really, the, the ZBA is the process, uh, for this.
The gatekeeper.
What made you choose Halifax?
Um, how did we find this?
We did highest possible property taxes and said, let's build there.
Um, how did we find this? So, the, the specific, uh, answer is, um, we have a crew of folks that have been, uh, working for us for twenty to thirty years that are finishing up a project in Plymouth. And we put forth a, uh, very strong effort to find their next home, uh, so we could keep them working. And, uh, we put forth a, uh, a, a, kind of a large effort using multiple folks within, within our company to, you know, find land to, to keep moving. And, uh, and we, we were like, uh, we got pretty far down the road on many projects that ended up just not, uh, not, you know, we couldn't come to terms with the seller and that sort of thing. And then we got four of them all at once, and, and this was one of them. So, um, we look for properties that make sense. Um, this is a location that is adjacent to a commercial center. Um, it's adjacent to other multifamily housing. Um, there are legit possibilities for folks walking from this community to restaurants and to stores, where many places that gets talked about, but it doesn't really happen if it's a half a mile away, right? Um, there is, you know, to be frank, you have one percent affordable housing, and that's what makes you, let's say, uh, susceptible to, uh, chapter forty B. With this community, um, if you take two sixty-five and two sixty-six together, I think that gets you close to nine percent. You hit ten percent, and then you don't have to deal with folks like me.
How much do you think this pro- property will be, um, taxed? Do you have any idea what this property would be, um?
No.
Assessed for?
I don't know, yeah, it's, um, and that's always a, uh, always a discussion point, because it. I don't know, yeah, it's, um, and that's always a, uh, always a discussion point, because it, there, there are some gray areas there.
Cause wouldn't that affect what you could offer for rent?
Um, it isn't, it is a, well, there's two ways that you get to what you can offer to rent, right? Um, what the mark, what people will pay is, is the biggest part of it. Um, you can ask for five grand a month and you're not gonna get it.
Right.
So you have to, you have to meet people where they are, you know, when, when you set your rents. And there's a lot of uncertainty, you know, moving forward in the current economic environment and what's gonna happen over the next, uh, next couple of years. But, um, fortunately, our, our company is in a very good position right now. Um, we can weather storms if they occur. Uh, we don't have a bank, um, that's looking over our shoulder for, you know, the acquisition cost or the roads. Uh, we'll get a lender for building the buildings themselves. Um, so that gives us, you know, uh, uh, again, flexibility to deal with what may come our way.
I'd be curious if there's any kind of tax leniency as far as property taxes go, because it's a forty B from the state.
Right.
Which means it doesn't help our balance sheet as a town.
Correct.
Only because I, oh, I'm sorry, only because I've like, it, I had a sore hand up and I kept talking, so I don't want to be disrespectful and not like you speak.
Is this my turn?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, um, I wrote it down, so. My name is Casey Sims, I'm a resident at Lydon Lane, the community directly abutting the proposed project of Halifax Trails. Um, I'm the secretary of the homeowners association, I met with you last week, that's the one on Zoom.
Yep, on the phone, yeah.
Yep. Uh, a little background information, I grew up in Halifax Meadows, this is my dad, who still lives in Halifax Meadows as well. Um, I lived there from birth to age twenty-six. I chose to purchase my own condo in Halifax Meadows in two thousand seventeen, and I've been there ever since, and I've had zero intentions of leaving. However, this project gives me many concerns. Number one is the influx of children this will create for the school system. I'm, I'm a teacher, so this is very concerning to me. Um, in our meeting last week, you had stated that about thirty children we would have from this project. Um, I'm also a data girl. Um, and I went around the condos and calculated about how many children we have in our condos. We have about one children per two units, which is sixty-two children. Uh, if we apply that data to this project, that would be a hundred and seventeen children over there and likely young school age in Halifax Elementary. Um, if we have about one child per unit, that puts us at about eighteen children from K to twelve. Eighteen additional in each grade. Uh, my other big concern is parking here. Um, I believe they're going off with numbers such as one point six seven five. Uh, and I can tell you that is not enough for my community. We are averaging spots for, um, our one hundred and fifteen units to be two point one spot per unit, and that's not enough for us. Um, my questions are, where will the excess cars go? Into the street, causing more traffic issues? Parking in Halifax Meadows? Parking at Grove Fifty-Eight? And this just sounds like an added job for the police force enforcing parking violations. Water? I also probably have arguably the brownest water in Halifax. And I don't think two hundred and thirty-five apartments next to me is going to help that. Uh, traffic? The area is going to be so densely populated between Halifax Meadows and next door to us. We already have trouble at one oh six and fifty-eight, just wondering what that would look like and potential parking issues as well. Uh, police and fire, can the police and fire departments handle this many more families in town? Um, and I'm sure, like I said, police are gonna have some things to do with parking. Uh, and then the bylaws, I saw a list of fifteen bylaws, including building too close to wetlands and building five feet from our property line. Um, the bylaws are made for a reason, and I think asking for fifteen waivers is kind of showing what this project would be doing to our town. So, please consider those points.
So, if, if possible, um, can you submit that to?
Sure.
All boards?
Mm-hmm.
Just so that it's heard? Because I don't know if the microphone was able to pick that up, and obviously, as a concerned resident, it's always best to submit that in writing.
To the ZBA?
Probably all of us.
Selectmen, because the selectmen are gathering, um, all of the comments and sending them in.
Okay.
So the selectmen.
Got it, yeah.
Frank Johnson, Ellen Street. Um, you had mentioned a treatment plant, can you explain that a little bit to me, please, or to the?
Sure.
Board?
So, um.
A waste water treatment plant, correct?
Yes, correct. Let's see, so relative to a traditional septic system, I'll kind of use that as a, as a starting point, assuming folks are relatively familiar with that. Um, the size of the system, the size of the leaching fields relative to the flow is smaller. Because the effluent leaving the treatment plant is cleaner than what would leave one's home without this additional treatment. So, what it, let me talk about kind of, I guess, the physical plant, if you will.
Yes.
So essentially, um, the, uh, equipment would take up two or three garage bays, um, in terms of its size. Everything else is underground. So, we would put them, uh, either in these garages or put another couple of, you know, extend this building slightly to house the treatment plant. Um, we're doing, so we started the process with the Department of Environmental Protection. We had a scoping meeting and, um, they tell us where we should investigate by doing test pits and, um, observation wells to test for groundwater and direction of groundwater flow. So, they want to make sure that we're not, um, you know, sending wastewater to areas that we shouldn't, namely drinking wells that are located over here to the east. Um, or raising groundwater generally, um, mostly with a concern for critters that live in the adjacent wetlands rather than any kind of flooding issue or anything like that. We're talking about an inch, you know, type of levels. Um, so the physical plant is really, you know, enclosed. You'll see a couple of kind of structures, you know, visible on the surface, but not sit, not, you know, raising above the level of land. The leaching will be in here. Again, as part of the scoping session with DEP, we're also gonna look over here to see whether that's possible. We may or not, may or may not need that, depending on the results of this examination. But we're gonna be out there next week, I believe, on Tuesdays and, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday, kind of, um, digging test pits and setting some monitoring wells and that sort of thing. So that whole, that whole process of, um, designing the treatment plant and getting a groundwater discharge permit is, uh, let's say, uh, heavily, heavily regulated, um, by, uh, the Department of Environmental Protection in the state, so. Um, did that answer?
Not really.
Okay.
Um, the treatment plant, I want to understand the operation of that, how does that operate? What is this plant going to be doing?
Uh, there's.
How does it, what's the function of it? And is it chemical treatment?
We have not decided yet.
A sludge treatment, is it filter press operation?
We haven't decided yet. So we're, we're at the point where we're trying to kind of, uh, get the geometry of it, of it down. And that's the first step in the process, is really figuring out where we can put the leaching, and then the other stuff evolves from that.
You might need a licensed operator for that plant?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then the discharge of that is gonna be back into the groundwater?
Yes. Yes, the, the liquid aspect of it.
Correct.
Uh, the solids, no.
And how will the solids be managed?
Again, we have to pick the type of treatment plant we're gonna do to fully answer that question.
And then what's the discharge parameters associated with what type of sampling protocols are gonna be in place and, and timeframeing of that as it goes?
Yeah.
Do you batch treat that? How does that all work?
You're, you're ahead of our design, your questions are ahead of our design, frankly. So, um, we've hired a company, um, by the name of Onsite, that's gonna be designing the treatment plant, uh, you know, for us. They're, they're expert in this, you know, designing municipal treatment plants, as well as these, um, you know, um, let's say, medium size, less than a hundred thousand gallons per day, uh, plants. Um, so we're gonna, you know, rely on them, you know, pretty heavily. And, uh, to, uh, recommend the best design, we're gonna balance, uh, both, um, uh, initial installation costs as well as operation costs. And, um, but I, I don't think it's gonna be, um, in the end, I don't think anyone's gonna notice anything.
Well, there's a nuisance associated with that of an operation as well.
Which can also be mitigated.
Great.
Yeah. But let's put it this way, we're gonna have residents within sixty feet of it that we're gonna be concerned about and answerable to. And they're gonna be closest to it than anybody else.
Um, heating, you said you're not going to have natural gas running there for heating, so how would the units be heated?
Um, so the, the way, we're evaluating that code now, honestly, but the way the world is going is going towards heat pumps and split systems, as opposed to, um, having your typical, you know, gas furnaces.
So it won't be oily?
It'll be electric.
No.
It's gonna be electric?
Yes.
A heat pump is electric?
I understand that.
Yeah.
No, I'm just making sure that you knew.
So it's gonna be baseboard electric or a, um, split, uh, heat pump unit, AC?
Split, split heat pump. Yeah, that's what we've been doing recently, yeah. Yeah, the, the efficiencies have really improved over the recent years to the point where they make sense. And, and it, it may be absolutely mandated next year by the state.
What about fire suppression?
Uh, all the units, all the buildings will be sprinkled.
So they are sprinkled?
Yes. Yeah, units of.
Garages?
Units of this size, once you get past three units or so, um, in one building, it's required that they have, uh, fire suppression.
What about the garages?
Um, I'm not su- probably these ones with the residences above, um, will likely have to be sprinkled. We'll look at the fire code, there's some input from the local fire chief, um, and determining exactly what happens there. I would not expect these freestanding garages to be sprinkled. There's also no heat in those either, so you'd end up with a, uh, you know, you'd only be able to do a dry system.
And then the, I have one more question. Regarding the landscape of the property, uh, I see you've got several stormwater retention basins there.
Yeah.
And there's a whole lot of asphalt there.
Mm-hmm.
For the sheet flow of water. And, um, so how is that all gonna be managed? As far as, how much of that goes out on the Mont Ponce Street, or does it all stay on the property?
There'll be no discharge to Mont Ponce Street, I can, I can say that clearly, so.
So the three basins there will collect the stormwater for this, how many acres is it, sixty-two?
No, the, so the entire site is twenty-six that goes down to here. From this area over is in the dozen acre range. So there's about, um, I just did this calc recently, there's about six acres of impervious. Between the building and the parking on two sixty-five.
And so as far as greens go, trees and lawn and whatnot, it's, how does, what's that all gonna look like?
Um, I'll bring, uh, it's hard, it's hard to describe, verbally describe. Well, this is, I mean, this is a good representation.
Oh, it is?
Yes, absolutely. Um, and I'll bring, uh, one of my favorite exhibits is actually from the community that I referenced on East Main, where we have an aerial photo in our rendering that we did at the beginning of the project, side by side. And if you're six feet away from the thing, you can't tell the difference. So when we render, we actually pick exactly what species we're gonna plant in the ground, the right size. We can, you know, dial the thing by what time of year and that sort of stuff. So it's actually something we take a lot of pride in. Um, you know, when we get our detailed landscaping plans, the renderings that we have will, will match with it, and you'll get a good, good sense of it. But you should go, save yourself a drive, um, go to Google Earth, street view by, uh, two seventy-four East Main Street in Norton, and just take a look from, from, in, in Google Earth as to what you can see there. It's lush, it's lovely, and, um, and that's what we do.
So how are you gonna calculate water to maintain that much of the green space?
Um.
This Halifax has a water ban, outdoor water ban pretty much year round.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, we haven't gotten to, you know, wells versus town water and, and that type of stuff yet, um.
Do you look into drilling wells to?
We haven't gotten to that yet.
Is that a possibility versus town water to feed these buildings?
Uh, no, not for drinking water.
Not for drinking?
No. We don't have any intentions of putting a, you know, water treatment system in.
Did you know that we were at a level three drought this year? And.
Pretty much everybody is.
Well, right, it's because of, of the extensive building being done, so I know it sounds really smart to like, create tons of housing, but when the properties and the towns can't uphold it, are we just not creating a cancerous society? Like, is LA really progress? You know, and like, is Braintree, who's had forty R and forty B come in and, they're, they're regretting every last bit of it cause of their water and their infrastructure issues, same thing with Situate. Um, they're having really hard times, Plymouth is about to experience it. And, um, so my fear is, as I grew up in this town, we don't have enough room on the streets. You know, even if you're looking at another classroom, where, where now, we, we go to Silver Lake. Have you seen Kingston and what's going on over there with the, I mean, uh, uh, amacity of the amount of, of apartments and houses that they're building in cluster, like such as this? I mean, because if you think about this, this is twenty-six acres, and you're going to put, so let's just go for an even twenty-nine third and we'll rough it out to thirty because you have the peach farm across the street. We allow in Halifax, one property per forty thousand square feet. So you're going above and beyond our zoning by two hundred units. Do you think that we actually will need those units after Kingston finishes at the mall? And, um, all of the other places, do you actually think that we will need and that people will come to Halifax to pay these types of rent? Do you, have you done the demographic study to see if people will actually be available once all these other projects are done?
Lots of questions there. I'll, I'll kind of take it from last to first if I, if I.
Please.
Get them all. So there's a, there's a market study in the project eligibility letter, and that's one of the things that MHP focuses on, cause they're interested in the numbers, cause there are gonna be one of the folks that actually finance this. And if they don't feel that it's viable, they're not gonna go forward with it. So yes, we do believe there's a demand, you know, for this product, otherwise we wouldn't have proposed it. Um, and even though, you, you know, I, I know the development that you're talking about by the Kingston Mall is probably the.
Well, it's not just that one, it's several of them.
So, um, uh, and full disclosure, we're likely to propose a development in Kingston as well. So, uh, um, just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be accused of not, since you brought up development in Kingston.
Is that a setup or in addition to it?
Has nothing to do with this, yeah, yeah. So, um, uh, and, uh, that hasn't even gone public yet, really, but, um, it's coming down the pipeline. So it, so, um, yeah, so, yeah.
Trust is the key thing on everything.
Yes, indeed. Um, so yes, we think that there's, uh, a market for it. Um, you touched on water. Uh, again, we're not at the technical issue standpoint that will get evaluated as part of the, uh, ZBA process. They will typically insist on, uh, hiring a, uh, someone to peer review, you know, everything that we submit, you know, as you guys likely do for your board. And, um, they will be working for you and, uh, you know, uh, let you know whether or not what we're submitting is valid and accurate. Um, but there's, uh, again, this is a very preliminary meeting. We have a layout plan, really, at this point, and we're working on our detailed plans, so.
I understand that, I'm just saying, like, what, like, if you're gonna come in here and, and put two hundred and thirty units in the town of Halifax, where we have twenty-one hundred units, including industrial and all that, you're, you're adding to all of the services and taking away the affordability of four hundred and twenty units of, um, elderly housing. So their, their housing may not be deed restricted by the state forty B. However, they lose their affordability based on the fact that now the services raise their taxes to points because we have to build more schools, add police, add fire. Single moms, single, that live in houses that might not be state deed restricted are now going to add taxes to their houses and take away the actual affordability of the little people that are just not deed restricted. Because I'm a railter, so I know that what happens with forty B is you're deed restricted. So you can't, and you have to always offer it, but have it, has anybody ever thought of? So, you can't, and you have to always offer it, but have it, has anybody ever thought of what the costs of adding the services to the town does to the people that live in the town?
Yes, there's, absolutely.
But it takes away the affordability of, so like, say for instance, my taxes go up five hundred dollars and this does happen every year because of the costs that go up for the, 'cause busing is huge. Right now, the transportation costs that are happening for schools, the IEP, the IEP programs and all of these other things, adding a classroom. Those, those things take away the affordability of everybody that has lived and invested in those towns based on the fact that we don't have deed restricted by the state affordable housing. However, we do have a whole section of cottages that were turned into single families. And the only reason that the state doesn't say we have ten percent affordable housing is because it's not deed restricted by this program. So, like, it does take all of the condos, all of the, um, houses that are of affordable times, all of our trailer park, mobile home park, four hundred and twenty units there, and adds to their tax base which pushes them out of their homes, literally. So, like, the, the thing is, is like, when you're coming in, can you think of that instead of the money that comes off the other side?
So, my, again, there's, you've said a lot of things here. So, one, um, you're talking about an economic analysis is, is kinda what all your points touch on. And how, what is the tax contribution and what are the estimated costs? So, those are calculable and, and you can come up with real answers for those things. I, I would say almost more importantly is that this development, this type of development is going to reach Halifax. And it's more of a question of who do you want to do it? And we are high-quality builders that work more cooperatively with, with towns than most other developers of forty Bs. So, I would just, you know, kind of get that on the table and say, you know, you may wanna just work with us. And try to make the best of this circumstance.
That was actually one of the things that I was gonna point to next from an economic standpoint, from a business perspective. From my understanding, and, and I appreciate you standing up here to, um, which, which I'm assuming in some towns the proper word will probably be called crucified, but, uh, no pun intended for the time of year, right? But, uh, I guess it would be more of, uh, my understanding by speaking to some of the other towns around that do have forty B is, and I appreciate you not articulating it this way by saying it's coming, like it or not, so just deal with it, right? Uh, because that seems to be the general vibe that a lot of our townspeople or any town that you talk to that it has to deal with forty B, right? Because we're under, we're under the, the, a lot of percentage.
It, it, it can be a very brute instrument, instrument, the forty B.
And a sledgehammer has its, its role in the demolition of a house, right? So, I get that and it's an important role. I guess my thing is, is just, is it to, is it, is it fair to assume that you wouldn't have even been got? It's, it's a waste of valuable resources to even get to this point if you didn't think that it's basically forty B and here we are.
Um.
I don't see how it's economically feasible for you to even get to this point if you didn't already do every single calc- I mean, a financial plan, right? Do every single calculation down on the decimal. If it was like, oh, let's think about Halifax, let's go stir up the bees' nest before we know every box can possibly be checked. I don't think, I, I would assume if you guys have been around long enough, you would know that you wouldn't be here if it wasn't almost basically at that point.
I think your comment gets to, you know, what do we think our odds are of success, you know, might be? And, um, you know, we wouldn't have purchased the land if we didn't think we could do something with it. We, this wasn't the only thing that we considered, but it's the only thing that's on the table now.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, the, um, and in terms of, you know, likelihood of success in residential real estate, it's extremely risky. You know, so nothing is ever, nothing is ever guaranteed. And, um, there have been, um, again, not forty Bs, but projects that we've gone much farther down this. If you, uh, look up ten twenty-one Kingston Place from a decade ago, we went through a full town meeting process.
Yeah.
Um, and spent a lot of blood and treasure to get to that point. And it, um, uh, and there are three windmills on the property now. So, um, uh, you know, stuff happens, but, um, I, I don't know how to really answer that, answer that question.
Actually, it wasn't even really a question, I guess it was more pointing it out to, to anybody that's watching or anybody that's in town that has, has a vested interest in this, which is, uh, a development company as large and with as much history as yours does not buy property of this size and go through with this proposal all the way through to the zoning board next month if you don't check all your, you know, boxes, dot your i's and crush your t's. So, what I mean by that is that that's why it's so unbelievably important that, that residents, for one way or another, even if it's just to be educated and not, and by, no offense, the horse's mouth. Versus, they did that in my sister-in-law's town and it's a show, right? It's, it's a, this is why we all need to be at the zoning board when you do your presentation and to be able to make sure that the people who are in charge of the stipulations, either the yes, the no, or the, the guidelines hear residents.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're not gonna waste your time or your money buying twenty-six acres and getting to where you've got a color picture just to say, boy, I hope this makes it with a coin flip. We're, we're at that point and that's a very serious project and you throw a forty B in there, we're now the state's back in it. It's gonna take some good luck if you don't want it. So, that's.
Yeah, and again, you know, we're, we've.
But when does the state actually step back? And this is something that I wanna say and I'm hoping that it gets into everybody's minds across the state. Because it, we're actually, when, when does it step in and state that you're actually taking away the viability of everybody else in that town in order to do so? I mean, like, but, but the state needs to, who works for us, just like we work for the town of Halifax, the state works for us? Meaning all the taxpayers?
I agree.
When do they care about our water supply? When do they care about our traffic? When do they care about our school systems? When do they care about our, our taxes and our things that, because they're, they're creating overpopulation which was done away with with subdivision control in the nineties? We already went through this in the eighties with co-ops and condos being built. For instance, when Lyden Lane and Twin Lakes went in, we had to do double sessions of schools. You wanna tell you which teachers will do double sessions of schools nowadays? Do you want, where are we gonna get the money?
That's why there's an S T two.
Where are we gonna get the money to build bigger schools? Where are we gonna get the money when we're already down to like literally we have ten cops than we should have eighteen at this current rate of people in Halifax? How are we gonna get the money to fund those, oh, I think we might have twelve now? But we're still not up to date with the amount of that. Do we have a ladder truck that will handle this? Are we gonna have to hire more firefighters? Creating forty B just because we can doesn't mean it's actually smart. I think that, I think that this, that developers should think past it too. Like, when you, you, I don't, I don't foresee in the future that with all the forty Bs and forty Rs being built all around us that we're gonna actually have that full. I don't see it. And I think that, I understand what your numbers are, but your numbers aren't based on what they're gonna do in Kingston.
No, I agree.
What they're gonna do in here and what they're doing in Pembroke because they're not built yet. So, the studies aren't done in the overpopulation. So, if we're gonna sit here and say, in, in that current rate that is affordable, fourteen to eighteen hundred dollars a month? That's what people dream, everybody's crunching numbers to get anything more than that. So, are we gonna have people who wanna live in Halifax for twenty-five hundred dollars for a one-bedroom and thirty-two hundred dollars for a two and thirty-six for a three? It's, I, I highly doubt it with gas prices.
I can tell, I can tell you that two times the state cares about everything you've just said. Three months before an election, everybody creates a negative on their, a negative deficit on the balance. I get what you're saying. All I would say is that we need to, as much as we can stand in front of the forest as the bulldozer comes, right? We need to have a very serious conversation and all of your points obviously being very valid, but his job is property development, right? That's not really for his.
No, I understand.
It's for, it's here to be heard while he's presenting, but what I guess we're going with is that to make it very clear to residents that if the bulldo- I mean, the bulldozer's got the gas in it and it's started and it's coming. And you can stand in front of the tree all you want to protect it.
But I think that it's time that this town stands up and says that they're ruining the affordability of every other person in this town to create twenty, how, how many out of two thirty-three, whatever, twenty-five percent?
Four hundred and fourteen living spaces.
But they're gonna take away four hundred and twenty trailers that house elderly, their affordability. They're gonna take away a whole section of two hundred and twenty units of condos, a whole, a hundred and.
Just to give you an idea, my mortgage and condo fee combined is less than your affordable house.
Without a deed restriction.
Right. So, so this all tied, by the way, this all ties in together, right? Because I think there's a lot of value to what you said, which is we're at one percent, state wants to see you at ten. It may be coming one way or another, so, and I'm getting somewhere with that. If it's coming one way or another, you may as well pick your dance partner, right? If you have the opportunity to, but we're not there yet. So, it ties into everything everybody's said tonight, which is why it's so important that if you do not agree with this, that you make it known to your zoning board, 'cause it seems as though the zoning board is who's gonna have the final say on this. So, because, and, and I just wanna spare, 'cause everything you say is valid and I absolutely agree with it.
We're about to be out of the way.
We're looking at, at him and, and I feel as though he could have taken a very different approach to tonight.
It's no offense to him.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Yeah, these are, these are state policy, state policy questions that are.
When does it become more important for us to actually look past a state policy and start thinking about the entire future of the area? Instead of over, overpopulating it to the point that we don't have water? I mean, like during the pandemic, which, you know, we see triple pandemic coming again on the news, right? We didn't have enough food for the people that we have here. We had like little, little shortages in our grocery stores. How are we supposed to supply for even more when we don't, when diesel prices are up? Like, has anybody ever actually stepped back to think logically what we're doing instead of we can do this and we're gonna make tons of money off of it? Because, like, has anybody ever thought about the one plus one equals two that makes the future better for all of us across the world? Like, I just don't understand. I sound like a hippie, I am, but it, but, but it's logical thought process.
The tree, by the way.
Because we're all, we're all taking, we're all taken from a water supply that has already been dwindled by every other town around us. And we're being affected by it by not, and everybody says we didn't, we didn't follow a state mandate of forty B of having ten percent. We do. But we're doing it with the amount of people that we can actually supply water, police, fire, schools. And as we watch Kingston, who we share a high school and a middle school with, as we watch them grow to beyond the capacity that Kingston can handle, Halifax needs a new school. We don't, where are we gonna get, where, where are we gonna be able to supply for all of this? I agree with Ms. Sims and State that I, I, like, her, her calculation of sixty-two children sounds a lot more logical. I mean, like, sixty-two children at Lyden Lane, how many units again, a hundred and ten?
Hundred fifteen.
Thank you, a hundred and fifteen. So, you have two hundred and thirty-three units. If we're adding that many kids to the school, we're not, what are, what are we gonna do? So, we're, we're damaging our societies.
The, the, for, for some quick math, I thought it'd be interesting to run it at sixty percent two bedrooms, ten percent three bedrooms, thirty percent one bedrooms, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's four hundred and fourteen living units. If you did the one for, one child for every thirteen living spaces, that's a hundred and fifty-nine kids. You do it for every unit, it's thirty kids, right? So, obviously, that's such a drastic difference. I guess I just have to see the, the statistics and where it comes from. I mean, obviously, it's not in your best interest to stand up there and say twenty-six and it's really one eighty.
No, I mean, of, of what we've heard regarding number of childrens in the school, what you provided is a helpful data point. I mean, it's, it's actually a real number, right? A lot of the other discussion is more kind of almost fear-based, you know, or speculative, right? Um, and we have real numbers in other communities that are more similar to what this is building. So, we'll provide those to you, you can dismiss them or accept them as, as you see fit. We have good, good confidence in them.
So, why, why wouldn't you say within the bylaw or lots have it? Like, we have two and a half stories so that we wouldn't have to be considering ladder trucks and fire stations and all that kinda stuff? 'Cause that's gonna add on, which will change the affordability and tax rates of, of your entire project and maybe make it not feasible, but never mind all of us in a town. Like, it's not feasible for us, like, we're gonna end up, why, why would you have to go above our bylaw of two and a half stories where we already have the equipment?
I'll just, I'll just say kinda one more thing in terms of housing. The tide has really shifted over the last five or ten years that housing is a need. There's actually folks leaving Massachusetts now because they can't find affordable housing. And there's a drain of talented people that are starting to go to rural areas where they're, the standard of living can be nicer and they can telecommute.
Or not get income tax, like in Florida, or Tennessee, and work on more computers.
Yeah, so, it's, it's, to build more housing, right? Is, I think, a, a well-accepted need within the state of Massachusetts. So, it's, it's just everywhere now. And that, and that hasn't, that hasn't been the case. And this is one piece of the puzzle to try to solve the lack of housing in Massachusetts. Um, regarding how, you know, whether, why wouldn't we build by zoning? It doesn't work, just plain doesn't work. And if you're gonna build affordable.
But our zoning was put in place for a reason. Our zoning was put in place due to the fact that we had issues because we weren't following it before.
You're talking about not having that.
Not having enough schools, not having enough, like, not having enough. And now we just add to it again and it, and I understand you don't wanna, I, I'm just hoping that it gets into the hearts of some developers because money is not the key to everything, once we overbuild everything and we don't have farm land anymore.
I'm proud to build affordable housing. You're not gonna convince me otherwise. This is, I, I started out in the Peace Corps and this is what I wanted to do, build affordable housing and now I'm doing it. So, I am not ashamed of, of putting forth this project. I'm, I'm proud of what it contributes.
So, I guess, uh, if we peel back a few layers here, just, and then we should probably just wrap off before we start coming out. Before we start throwing chairs at each other, um, that's other meetings. I guess I'm concerned that, that Amy does bring up about, you know, a bylaw saying two and a half stories versus three for, for ladder trucks and accessibility, that, that, that is a big one. I mean, if it's, is there a reason why it's three stories instead of two? Is it an economic thing where it just doesn't?
Yeah, once you get to two, you gotta put it in elevator. Elevators extremely expensive to, to put in and kinda, it's a bit of a tipping point.
What would you do if you were, were denied this by the zoning board? Would you go to the state and circumvent us?
I'm not gonna get into that speculation. What I'd like to do is just.
Right, but if you would, would you?
You haven't seen the proposal yet. It's premature to go through a list of hypotheticals.
Well, I'm just asking what your, what your, what your, um, process would be.
I can't answer that, it's too far away.
Can you go back to the elevator comment real quick and say that again, please? I didn't quite catch that.
Um, so, if you have two stories for, and you want to put an elevator in, it is expensive on a per-unit basis. So, the elevator, the cost of the elevator needs to be distributed, distributed over more units.
Right, so, two floors, you put an elevator no matter what?
Yeah, it's, it becomes a marketing issue, you know, of, uh, what you can get for a walk-up versus an elevator. Yeah, it's, it becomes a marketing issue, you know, of uh, what you can get for a walk-up versus an elevated building.
So third floor dilutes the cost, which contributes to cost more evenly for us.
And again, it, it's, um, you, this is what affordable housing looks like most places. You know, in terms of three stories, sometimes four-story elevated buildings. It's uh, again, we try to do it better, more attractive, more thoughtful. But the uh, but a lot of folks end up with this generally sized building as something that uh, makes sense.
So the inside of that building, you've got a common corridor on each floor, units on both sides, correct?
Correct.
So from front to back, side to side, it's a common floor down the middle, it's like in a hotel type operation?
Yep, and uh, yeah, two staircases, one central elevator.
Right, because that makes it more available for um, the assistance of a handicap, you know, accessibility.
Basically, any, any unit.
You're not just restricted to the ground floor if you're in a wheelchair. You can go all the way. I get you.
Well, and again, it's a convenience for people, but anyways, thank, you know, I'm glad we had this opportunity. This is the, the starting gun. Again, normally this meeting doesn't occur in the process. Normally we, uh, we wait and present to the ZBA as kind of our first meeting. So this is a, a little bit ahead of the game in terms of the, the typical routine. But hopefully those here, those at home, have learned a little bit about the project and gotten some questions answered.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, appreciate your time.
Sure.
Sorry we couldn't have more.
Yeah, full board.
It's a prop, it's a problem. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
I do too. I just want to just point it out to you that sometimes building too much and taking away from the people that were there creates more discourse and less affordable housing because the taxes go up. And then the affordability of those houses created is gone as well. And also the water supply. And that's actually more important than having, like, you know, like in LA, they're overpopulated and they don't have enough water. When, when are we going to see that? So like, there has to be balance. And that's, that's, that's one, that, that's like a tenth of our housing in the entire town right there. And that's, that's a, that's a heavy density to put on a small town and not expect the rest of the residents. And that's where I find it insulting, is that to make twenty-six units of affordable housing, you take away the affordability of the rest of the residents in the town. So how does that actually?
This is profitable.
Which is the opposite point of affordable housing. It's called developing beyond the means of a town. That's what it's called. It's, it's death of our country.
We're in a, we live in a capitalist society, so it's, the bottom line is profit.